Independent School District Board of Trustees is in regular session on Tuesday, November the 19th, 2019, at the Boardroom Administration Building 1515 Cherry Book, President of Texas, at 5:30 PM. Board Member present, Mr. Jack Bailey, Ms. Vicki Morgan, Mr. Fred Roberts, Ms. Nellie Sutherland, Ms. Mary Selkijano, and myself, Marshall Kendrick. Mr. Kenny Finan will be here shortly. As the record indicates, a core of the board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that no small meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code 5, Chapter 5, 5-1. The case will begin with Mr. Bailey, and the pledges by Mr. Roberts.
We pray, holy Father, we just thank you for this day you've given us, we thank you for the beautiful weather that we enjoyed today. Lord, we just ask that you'd bless this time now, that as we discuss the business of this school district, that those things that we say and do will be pleasing to you. For we thank you, especially at this time of the season, for all the many blessings, both personal and as a district, Lord, we thank you for the wonderful staff that loves and protects and educates our children here. Also, we ask, in Christ's name.
Amen.
Face the American flag, please, and repeat with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas pledge.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Oh, man, I just stepped on your chips. A policy update by Ms. Jody.
We've got so much stuff here, I don't know what to do with all of them.
Good, Jody.
Good evening, board members. So this time, we're just having a local district policy update that is prompted by recommended changes from the administration. It includes two local policies, and then a regulation was also included for your review that was drafted by our, while working with our CNI department, for grading and progress reports. The two local policies are CDC Local and CQA Local. CDC deals with solicitation of gifts and revenue, and so specifically what the edits to that policy do would allow folks that are using crowdfunding sites like Donors Choose or Amazon Wish List programs that are district-approved, with permission of the Grants Department and their supervisor, they would be allowed to use the district name, or the campus name in those solicitations for...
Give me an example of that, Jody.
A lot of times, it's used by classroom teachers to fund projects within the classroom, similar to the way the Education Foundation awards grants. Their mini-grants, their teacher mini-grants. So the teacher may say, "I want to set up a new reading, you know, NOOK, and I need four iPads for that, and some flexible seating, or, you know, some fun seating for the corner over there," and so they would describe their project and put amounts to it and solicit it. Our policy already provides that anything solicited like that by teachers for use in the classroom is property of the district. And just so putting in, allowing them to use our name, like Donors Choose requires the teacher to input information about where they work and who their supervisor is, and even sends an email to the supervisor to notify them that they've solicited what they have.
And those are items that have already been approved in the budget?
No. These are like for additional things, like the same kinds of things that the teacher would be requesting a mini-grant from the Education Foundation for. So it's something special that's above and beyond, you know, just the general supplies that are provided in the budget.
And Olivia can pull a report through Donors Choose to see where those items are going to and where they're being distributed, and whether they're consumable versus non-consumable, like the iPads, for example, so they are property of PISD. So we knew we needed a policy related to it, and this is an update to that. But there was a time last year when one donor went through and funded everything on Donors Choose, everything.
I mean, tens of thousands of dollars, hundreds probably sometimes, or more. I mean, I know like major companies are using that website in particular to fund as part of their donations. It's teacher-specific, so it's a 501(c)(3), and so anyone from anywhere can go log in and look up Pasadena ISD projects and fund whatever they pick and choose.
That's awesome. When I read it, my whole concern was, are we over-killing the community with, you know, these things? But obviously, if it was someone out of state, you know, an anonymous donor, but not necessarily within our community, that funded those projects...
That's awesome. My only thing is, okay, so I, as a teacher, if I decide to do what you're asking, right, that reading NOOK or what have you, do I have to get approval from my principal first?
Yes, you have to get approval from your principal and the PISD Grants Department, not only for the project, but then also for like the items you're requesting, because we don't want them, right, to ask for technology devices that won't work on our network or with our stuff. So we want to kind of be able to vet, you know, the different things like that that are being provided. And so knowing that certain things, like the Amazon Wish List, already ties the district name to it, and like Donors Choose requires the district's name, they've been allowed to solicit things like this in the past, they just never could use the district's, you know, identifiers. It would have to be, you know, "I want this fun funky thing for my classroom on their Facebook to their friends and family." But they weren't really allowed to say where they worked, or, you know, identify where it was going. And so we are just wanting to expand it a little bit, right, so that they can use our names and comply with the websites that require that they be able to identify something about their employment and include that information.
My only other question would be, let's say that this project, I don't know, I'm making it up, let's say that my wish list is $18,000.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what an average wish list is, but...
It varies based on...
Okay, let's say that my wish list is 18,000, and I end up getting four. And so it dies there, right? And so I get $4,000 purchased equipment, and so I end up really can't completing my project, what happens to that $4,000 worth of stuff?
That would have been my question, too.
So a lot of times, when it's an Amazon Wish List, they're asking for specific items.
Right.
So it may be that it's not so much project-based, but I need a bookshelf to put, you know, a little library on, or I need certain amounts of books. So you're still going to get the 4,000 worth of books, because on Amazon, they're actually purchasing the products that you want, and those are shipped actually directly to the school and the campus for them to use in their classroom. And so I don't know, I think with Donors Choose, there is like a duration for it, and a lot of those projects are either funded as, "I'll buy one iPad, I'll buy two iPads," but I don't, I mean, that equipment is being, you know, shipped back to the campus. A lot of times, what we're seeing on Donors Choose, though, is that projects are being funded, either in very large parts or completely. And so we're not getting a lot of, like, mail things, I think.
So this doesn't go out to the community?
The teacher, or, you know, they could promote it, but most of the time, those teachers are, they're promoting it on their own personal social media, so it's going to their friends and family, not necessarily just within the PISD.
You would have to go to those sites and want to donate. The thing that concerns me a little bit about this is, you know, we sometimes saturate the community, and, you know, now we're asking for cash donations rather than, which really isn't a bad idea, I'm not knocking any of this, but we're asking for cash donations rather than buying candy. We're saying, well, you, you know, you want to support the baseball team or whatever by giving a cash donation. And I just, I'm just a little bit concerned that we've done, in the beginning, when I got on this board, and I'm not saying this was right either, but we had fundraisers, and like elementary schools had a book fair and a carnival. That was it. And really and truly, the other organizations, the booster clubs did some fundraising, but other than that, we didn't do a lot of door-to-door, or, you know, of course, we didn't have the ability of Internet. I'm just worried about the community thinking that we've always got our hand out, and yet when it comes time for a bond issue or something like that, we're asking for more because we don't have the money to fund it.
I don't think that's the case in what she's talking about at all.
Okay.
Because there are people on websites that corporations and people and foundations, they're always looking to place money. And this is the type of things that she talks about, you go on the program, and people says, "I want to fund that." And we're not asking the community for that. This is corporations, foundations, just like our grant people.
Well, but Jody just said, you know, it can go out on their webpage, to their family, their friends.
Oh, yeah, but the people that pick it up, and if their friends want to fund, fine.
Okay, okay.
And we talked about that, Ms. Morgan, we discussed that in Cabinet at length, and we even got a committee. But what we thought was, other districts, other teachers across the state are doing it, it puts our teachers at a disadvantage to some of those above and beyond, whether it's robotics, or the chess club, or some of those things that the general budget just can't fund.
Right.
And I know we do an amazing job with our Education Foundation, but as many grants as they give each year, they turn that many and more down.
I know that.
So I think we were at a, you know...
And districts across the nation are doing this. I mean, Amazon even had a big back-to-school push, where it was like, you know, "Fund the teacher's wish list." And so, I mean, it was just, kind of like they'll do National Giving Days, where it's kind of, you know, those sorts of things, and, I mean, the whole...
Well, that's a fundraiser for them, too.
Yeah, I mean, and the whole Donors Choose website, right? It's a 501(c)(3) organization and a nonprofit, and they are school education-specific and designed to do this, and designed to work with, you know, either an individual person that just wants to go on and fund things, or that what I think that we get the most support out of there, though, are like either philanthropic-type folks...
Yeah.
Or like large companies, and are looking for...
And I think teachers were going to do it regardless, and being able to monitor it, and Olivia pull reports, and see descriptions of what they put, you know, we don't want that story out there that our board and our budget is not providing the necessary means.
Yeah, that's a concern I have.
So that's what we wanted to be aware of, is what is being said that's tying our name to it? Because we may not want to tie our name to every item that they wish for. So that's why the principal approval and the Grants Department approval is necessary.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had two things. So I know you said, you know, that it requires principal approval, so is that through the end of the project, so even when it closes? The principal, when it's done, they, through the end?
I mean, the principal's aware of those projects and updates to those projects, like on Donors Choose throughout the process. If things are happening, my understanding is that the administrator contact is also getting the email notifications, just like the creator of the project would be.
And so then, most of these donors, it's a new pool?
It's, I mean, it's worldwide web, so it's not, what do you mean, it's a new...
Most of these donors are new donors?
I would say...
My only hesitation is that, I just would, I just would hate that, let's say a donor is funding, let's say, just one classroom, whereas maybe as opposed, they could be funding a grade level, you know what I'm saying? Maybe that's selfish, I don't know.
But I think, the thing is, too, though, is that, you know, we may have employees that have ties, right, to a specific family or company...
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
And that company may say, "I don't want to fund the whole third grade, I only want to fund the projects I pick, too."
Right.
I mean, and this, you know, allows that, a little bit of that control, but...
I can just provide...
Yeah, go ahead.
Jody, let me just provide a little bit of explanation, I can give a previous example. We previously worked with through the month of October Chevron, okay? Chevron has come on board, they did a Fuel Your School program, in which all schools in 77502, 77503, 505, and if I remember correctly, 506, those schools in that area could go through Donors Choose with Olivia's approval, okay, and the principal approval, to request a grant up to $4,000. We just got word, and in fact, recently, that through this Chevron Fuel Your School program, a total of 72 grants were awarded for our schools in those zip codes, in a total amount of $53,000 from Chevron, $5,000 from other individuals who saw that on Donors Choose and chose to give. So it is more through the Donors Choose, the corporations like Chevron, who, and Chevron, they donated to this program across, you know, our area, the Houston area, was $425,000. So we received of that over 50, what did I say, $58,000, $59,000, $58,000 from that. So it's just a way, and like I said, it's a bookkeeping way to make sure our principals approve, our grant department approves, and in with Donors Choose, we are having to put our school and, you know, the district and that sort of thing.
How are we recognizing the donors? How are we doing that?
Well, twofold. One, of course, you get all of the donations in the board book as well, okay? But then through Chevron, we have already, we are about to push out a big social media, okay, blitz, saying thank you to Chevron. If you remember, we had the Fuel Your School program, where four of the grants were awarded at Cruz Elementary.
Yes.
And I worked with, specifically with Chevron, we did videos, and they were just very, very excited, because we were promoting them supporting us in our Pasadena area.
That's great, that's great.
So that maybe gives you a little bit of idea of a program and how we're using the Donors Choose, and then how, but there is that check and balance through Olivia and the principal, because I totally agree, we need to make sure we have those pieces.
Absolutely.
Because we want to make sure it is a valid grant.
Yeah.
No, and I realize, you know, people have connections, and...
And I would say that probably most of the things that they're soliciting like that are coming from folks, that it's not necessarily the parents of, you know, in our community. It's not, I mean, sometimes it is, but most of the time, it's big companies. It's people that may be from here but live somewhere else. It's people that have an interest in STEM projects, or, you know, they're from, we recruit teachers from everywhere, you know, out of state, and so their family in Ohio is wanting to know, you know, "How can we help your classroom, or what can we do here?" And I think that gives them that ability, where I don't necessarily think that we're like taking donors from, that would have otherwise donated to the Education Foundation, if that makes sense.
Okay, so what's the website again?
DonorsChoose.org.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. Okay, and then the other one was CQA Local, and this was just a follow-up. TASP has come out with a recommended local policy for any of the school districts that had originally received the OCR Web Accessibility Complaint, and we were one of the very, very first school districts, so we were, you know, finalizing our resolution agreement and the monitoring of that and everything with the OCR well before this was released. And so now that we've become aware of that, we just wanted to go ahead and that's, you know, go ahead and adopt that to kind of wrap that up. Any other questions?
Yeah, me either.
Is this on the disability deal?
It's been years old, I think we received it originally in 2016.
What about EIAR?
That is the regulation that was drafted for grade reporting and progress reports. We had an EIA regulation, and so this is just updates to it. You guys had approved EIA Local in August, and so as a result of, you know, those policy changes, that was something that Karen's folks were looking at updating and including, like, new language to address personalized learning and grading in that platform that wasn't originally in our grading regulations. My understanding is the information that's in this regulation, though, has also been included in the code of conduct already. And so they just wanted you guys to be aware that, you know, of this draft, and so if you had any questions with that, that before the administration formally adopted it, that you would have an opportunity to give any input you had.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Jody, very much.
Well...
We will adjourn to closed session, present the Texas Government Code, Sections 5, 5-1, excuse me, 107, 4th purpose, concerning appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duty is discipline or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or to hear complaints or charge against a public officer or employee concerning matters related to superintendent's recommendations to higher administrative personnel and/or concerning matters related to superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, non-renewals, and termination of contracts for professional personnel. 5, 5, 1.07, 1, to consult with district attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district on the code of professional responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. To seek the advice of its attorneys about pending or contemplating litigation or settlement offer, or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 5, 5, 1.07, 2, for the purchase, custody, purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, we will reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda, discussion of state financial accountability rating for 2017, 18. I'm not in the right place, yeah, discussion only.
All right.
Carla?
Board members.
Good evening. We're going to talk about our annual financial accountability management report, better known as the first report. This is a requirement that we need to review it, and so I'll go through it as highlights, and I'll give you an opportunity to ask me any questions, if y'all'd like to ask any questions. So on the handout, the first, y'all have a copy in your agenda on your book, and so the first part's just the raw data from TEA, so you can see exactly what I'm going to talk about, makes our score. Again, we're superior rating with a 98, 98 out of 100, not too bad. So we missed two, and hopefully we'll eventually make up those. So we'll skip over to the overview, and I'll just go over the brief highlights on what it all meant. And so for indicators one through five, those are basically a yes or no response, and as long as you have a yes, you pass it. This year, they did not score number five, so they removed that one, and so instead of 15 indicators, this year, we only have 14. And then we go to the other indicators, and six through 15 really have to do with administrative costs, and we'll go through some of our administrative costs. Indicator six is how much cash do we have on hand? You're supposed to have at least 30 days, we have 108 days, so that's very good for us. On the debt ratio, they're just making sure that we can cover our debt, if we had any debt. On our assets to long-term liabilities, they're just making sure that we are solvent and that we're not going to go out of business, so we're good there. Our revenue in the general fund, that's just showing that we are adding to fund balance we did last year, and on the year that we closed, and the year that we're in the process of closing, we will see the same thing, as well as where we're adding to it. Again, the revenue exceeds the cash, so we have, like I said, over the 60 days, they look at the cash really hard, so you'll see that in several of the indicators. And then the number 11, which is one that we really pride ourselves on, that's our administrative cost, that's our function 41, and that's for the people here at administration. You have to stay within a certain range, and right now, we stay within it, we are $12 million under the threshold from the state, so we're really low on that side of it. And when they look at the district enrollment versus the teacher ratio, and we stay within the 15% that they require us to stay in. Our expenditures for the budget, we have to stay, this year that we did was 3% variance, we had a difference of $427 for our almost $500 million, that's not too bad, that we missed it. Next year, we're only going to be able to do it by 1%, so we're watching that one fairly closely to see, especially with all the new changes TEA has made. And indicator number 14, that's just to make sure that we're free of material weakness in the audit, and we were definitely free of material weaknesses in the audit. And then number 15 is that we do not have an adjusted repayment schedule from TEA, and we do not have an adjustment payment schedule from TEA. Those are the highlights of what the report means. Some of the things that I like to mention, that we like to talk about, is just some of our good things that happen within the district and over finance. So we look at our financial strengths, and one of the things that we look at is, we exceed our 12.5% fund balance that we reserve, that y'all have put aside on the restrictions, and we're above that, and we continue to improve upon that every year. So that's excellent, that we're way above what we're required to in fund balance for TEA standard, and plus for what the board has put in place for our resolution. On our operating cost, again, that's talking about the 3% of the, our administrative costs, and showing that we're way below what the state average states. And one of the things that we look at on our budget, 87% of our budget is for payroll and benefits. And then we have 3% that goes close to our utility bills, and then the next one's followed by our property insurance of 2%. So that doesn't leave us a lot of extras that we can give out to do, because we spend most of our money for payroll. And so that is one thing, because we pride ourselves on making sure that we give what's best for our students. So that's why you will always see that high number of 87 or higher percent in the payroll side of it. On our tax collections, we are up this year to 99.7% on the year that we closed. We continue to increase our expenses that we bring in for our tax collection, so we don't have a lot that's outstanding. So we're up to 99.7%. On our cash management, we make sure that we invest in the proper ways that we're required to. Like, the year that we closed, we had over 3.4 million in investments that we made for the district between all of our bond money and our local funds, so that's a good increase. And a lot of that has to do with the economy changing, and we're seeing that we're getting more money on our interest. So we're making money on interest, the money we make on interest goes back to fund balance, or it goes back to this, earlier y'all approved some of the bond projects, so those are the extra money that we get, that we can spend on different projects, and that's because of the revenue that we're bringing in from the investment side of it. On our budgeting, you know, this year, we, it was a long, hard process with the House Bill 3, and I expect it to get the same this next year because of the way that TEA is changing it. They keep changing different pick codes, so those are just things that we start the process early in January to look to see. This past year, y'all noticed that we did the zero-based budgeting for departments, and so that's really worked well, so we can see where that saves some money. So we'll continue that process again as we move forward in the future. It's important that we recognize the awards that the department has won. We have, the past several years, we've had the GFOA for our CAFER, because we turn in the CAFER every year, and we always win that award. We've had the awards for the budget, we have the awards for Transparency Stars, and so we'd like to continue that, because those are important, that we have all those. You also see the superintendent's contracts that we're required to present, all the ones that she's had, that I know she's got one more contract out there, but it wasn't in place when this year closed that we're doing. And then the last thing that we have is, did, where I asked y'all the question, did y'all receive any gifts or anything from any vendors? And so we document that, that if you have. I will note that Mr. Kendrick's son is one of our vendors, however, he does not donate any gifts to the board members at all. So I'm going to let y'all ask me questions, if y'all have questions on the first report.
I'm just pleased, again, with the job that's been done by the department, by the school district, but under your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, now going to end special recognition tonight.
Well, board members, we have a treat for you tonight, because we're going to be recognizing some of our brightest students in the school district. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation has recognized and honored academically talented students and encouraged the pursuit of intellectual excellence. Over the years, the National Merit competition has become an accepted standard of excellence and an encouragement to guide students toward higher education. High school juniors enter the National Merit Program by taking the PSAT, and then Pasadena ISD, as you know, administers the exam to all enrolled 11th graders. Tonight, we honor students being recognized by College Board and the National Merit Scholarship Corporation for their outstanding performance on last year's October 2018 PSAT. So the members of the class of 2020 here tonight have earned program recognition as either National Merit semifinalists, commended scholars, or Hispanic scholars. We hope you'll agree that these exceptionally talented individuals, and many more like them, deserve this profound recognition. A representative is going to be coming forward from each high school who will introduce their school's honorees. So we'll start tonight with Dr. Kirk Lewis, Career and Technical High School, and we have Jessica McCoy here to introduce their honorees.
Good evening, everyone. So our first student from CTHS is Azul Elizondo. Azul's goal is to become the first person in her family to earn a bachelor's degree. She intends to pursue a degree in arts at the Pratt Institute or Massachusetts College of Art and Design. Azul credits her CTHS digital graphics teacher, Ms. Nelson, with helping her find her passion in book and industry illustration, and her AP US history teacher, Mr. Chapman, for being a positive role model. CTHS's second student tonight is Joe Patrick Polera. C T H S's second student tonight is Joe Patrick Polera. Joe Patrick is pursuing a degree in healthcare administration. Joe Patrick states that he has learned through the dental program at C T H S that there are many different kinds of professions in the healthcare industry. He would like to continue his education at Rice University. Joe Patrick said he is inspired by Mr. Fleming because of his hard work and dedication to C T H S. And C T H S had one more student, but unfortunately, Lee Chavez was not able to be here tonight, but he wanted to thank the board for the opportunity to be recognized.
My name is Clinton Hopper. I'm an assistant principal at Dobie High School. Tonight, we're excited to recognize seven of our students from Dobie, four of whom we have with us tonight. First, we have Sophia Culmenary. Sophia is a senior at Dobie. She is the daughter of Anna Valencia, one of our Spanish teachers at Dobie. She wants to study chemical engineering, and she actually did some research this summer at U T M B. Our next student is Enoch Ruben Carril. Enoch would like to attend U of H and study mechanical engineering, and also, Enoch is the editor of our yearbook, or the senior editor of our yearbook. Next, we have Emily Jasmine Reyes. Emily wishes to go to U T and study economics, and she's the president of DECA, which is one of our business organizations at Dobie. And then, our last student that we have with us here tonight is Eloy Sanchez. Eloy wishes to study bioengineering, and Eloy was actually, or is actually, an Eagle Additionally, we have two other national Hispanic scholars who are not present tonight. Sof, uh, I'm sorry, Ashley Marie Lahn, and, actually, there's one more, and then we have two commended scholars, Corn Napdole and Tian Wu, who are not here tonight.
Good evening. My name is Laura Gomez, and I am campus principal at Pasadena High School. We're going to start with our national Hispanic scholars. First, we have Gabino Alfaro. Gabino is very involved in Phi Theta Kappa from San Jacinto College. He is, he would like to pursue a business major at the University of Texas after finishing at Pasadena High School, and he's very involved in LULAC as extracurricular activities, aside being very involved in school. Next, we have Angela Lizeth Herrera. Angela is our vice president for our two twenty-twenty class, and she's also president of our choir program. Angela is going to be one of our future music teachers. She plans to attend University of Houston, and she's majoring in music, music, teaching in music. Linda, come sign her. Next, we have Tanya Trujillo, and Tanya is volunteers for Red Bluff Elementary. She's very involved in their C I S program. She plans to pursue a degree from the University of Houston in computer engineering. And we have, he's not here, David Hung. He is actually sitting at Rice University at this time. He graduated a year early, and he's, he could not make it with us tonight because he's taking a theology and math class at Rice University right now, so he sends his regards. And he actually was not only our national scholar, but also commended. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Guerrero. I'm one of the assistant principals at Pasadena Memorial High School, and I have five students that I would like to introduce to you tonight. I'm going to start out with our National Merit semifinalist, Ms. Carly Benson. Carly's ranked number one in our class. She has a GPA of five point four-three. She, her plan for college is out of state in cold and far away, so she has applied at Yale and Columbia University. She wants to major in statistics or data science and minor in political science. She wants to be a statistician, oh my goodness, statistician, thank you, for local, state, or federal government, and dreams to work for the census one day. Also, Carly scored a perfect score on her A C T and missed one question. She scored a fifteen eighty out of sixteen hundred on her S A T, so. Next, I would like to introduce our national Hispanic scholars. First, we have Alani Casares. She plans to attend University of Texas in Austin or Houston Baptist University. She is planning to be a nurse, and she wants to work in a hospital. We're very proud of her. Next, Andy Venancio. He's ranked number two in our class with a GPA of five point two-three. He plans to go to John Hopkins University or Cornell. He has also applied at U T at Austin. He is going to major in mathematics, statistics, or psychology, and he has open plans and hopes to obtain opportunities as he works towards his goal. Next, we have Ashley Williamson. Ashley is planning on going to University of Houston Engineering College and major in chemical engineering. Ashley hopes to use her chemical engineering degree towards medical science. Thank you, Ashley. And last, we have Gabriel Diaz. He couldn't be with us tonight. He is ill, but he also plans to go to the University of Texas in Austin and major in psychiatry. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Rierich. I'm an assistant principal at Sam Rayburn High School, and I am very proud to introduce our two national Hispanic scholars. First, we have Carla Rangel. She is an aspiring immigration attorney. She is involved in many organizations at our school, including DECA, Theater, Rayburn U, N H S, among many others. She was selected to be a Lita Scholar last summer and spent seven weeks at Princeton University. She's been accepted to Texas A and M and U T Austin, and she is also anxiously awaiting responses from her Ivy League and other highly selective colleges that she has applied to, so we're very proud of her. I also have Jonathan Santa Banez. He is a very talented artist and hard-working, intelligent student at Sam Rayburn. He has currently been accepted to two colleges and is seriously considering U T Dallas. He was also invited by U T Dallas to be a Terry Scholar, so his application for that is pending, and we are certain he's going to get it.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Carmela James, South Houston High School, College Now Coordinator, and I have the honor of recognizing our national Hispanic scholar, Erika Guadalupe Ocosta. Erika plans to attend Rice University, where she would like to major in psychology and minor in statistics. Her future plans include, she would like to pursue a career as a clinical psychologist and open her own private practice after obtaining her sci. D. In, in her spare time, which she has a little of, I'm sure, she enjoys playing the violin and learning German, been in book. She is also orchestra president, and she's a member of the National Honor Society. Would all of the parents responsible for these bright minds please stand so that we may honor you as well? These successful students could not, would not be possible without your support, so
Same money, because lots of scholarship money right there. Same money.
Yep. Money, money.
School picture. No.
Same money.
It's faith, hope, and love.
Right, right. Future they've got.
Jane Sabry.
Very proud of all of you. Great job.
Our future looks pretty good. Parents, if you would like to leave now and not stay for the business meeting, you're welcome to stay if you would like, but if you would like to exit and be with your students tonight, please do. Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, tell me.
What did you say?
We have no public comments tonight, so we'll continue with the agenda, consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, same by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consider, excuse me, consideration of possible approval of administrative personnel.
Mr. President, I move to approve addendants A through B.
Second.
Motion made in second. Motion by Mrs. Carahana and Mrs. Morgan, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
First, I'd like to introduce the first person, so congratulations to Ms. Maricela Escamilla. Congratulations, you were at Schneider Middle School, and you are now our new behavioral health specialist. Would you like to introduce your family? I can see you have little ones there.
I have my two little ones, my son Evan, my daughter Olivia, my husband Mikey, and then we've got my Schneider family here, my border and soul picture. And then, you.
Congratulations. And we would like to welcome to Pasadena I S D, Ms. Pamela Johnson. Welcome, Ms. Johnson is our new specialist, advanced academics. Do you have any family with you this evening?
Yes, I do. I have my daughter Courtney Croft, and I have my other daughter Abigail Johnson, and I'm delighted to be here in Pasadena.
We are as well. We are a big family here, as you will see shortly. Welcome to our district.
Is that a relation?
Normally, we have a lot more personnel, so this is a very light night.
That's right. Thank you. Consideration of possible approval of additional personnel for the payroll increases for the two thousand, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, same by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
Very much appreciated by all of our staff.
Consideration of possible approval of renewal of the on-site clinic contract, RFP number fifteen dash oh-two-four.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of renewal of medical stop-loss coverage, self-funded plan, C S P number seventeen dash zero-zero-three.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same by Mr. Hernandez. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Certified personnel and support personnel for information only. Educational section, consideration of possible approval of school affiliation agreement between P I, Pasadena I S D, and St. Luke's Patients Medical Center.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same by Mr. Hernandez. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Consideration of possible approval of campus improvement plans for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Carahana, same by Mrs. Morgan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of Freeman Elementary, Garfield Elementary, Hancock Elementary, Palmer Elementary, Ritchie Elementary, Sparks Elementary, and Sullivan Middle Schools' targeted improvement plans for two thousand nineteen, twenty, two thou, excuse me, nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Dr. Hickman?
Yes. And you have a copy of her presentation as well? I think Ms. Croft passed that out just a little bit ago.
Yes, we did.
Well, since you have it in front of you, I'm going to go ahead and get started.
Is your mic on?
Is your mic on? Test?
It is now.
I'll lean closer. Lean in. We are talking tonight about the Effective Schools Framework for Continuous Improvement, and you are going to be asked to accept the TIPS plans for these campuses that are required to turn in plans for improvement. So, in the past, we have shown you TAIS, T A I S. The state has changed the intervention plans for our campuses to Effective Schools Framework. To be quite honest, we've walked several schools with the TAIS system through school turnaround, and we have been successful with every single school that we did that with. I was worried about changing the plan and changing what they were suggesting, but we find that the Effective Schools Framework is even more powerful, and we're very excited already about what we're seeing with the schools using that system, and we are suggesting to campuses across our district to do some self-reflection using the plan to keep improving and not being satisfied with where they are now. It's a really, it's a, it's a good instrument. So, right now, the required intervention campuses for our district, the state changed their mind several times over the summer, and about five weeks, five weeks ago notified us that if you had a D overall, which was Garfield, Sparks, and Ritchie, you had to also go through this process and they had to bring a TIPS plan to you guys. So, that was a new item from the state, and they have been going through the process for about five weeks and have written the plans that you have. We have one campus, Hancock, that did, was rated with an F, a fifty-nine F. I think it's important to note that her actual score, the campus's actual score, was a sixty-two, but the state added some new rules, and if a campus has three or more domains rated at F, even if their overall score is not an F, they have to be given a fifty-nine. So, they actually made a sixty-two, but have to be, use the fifty-nine and be rated with the F. So, that plan is in front of you also, and I'll tell you what, Ms. Sandoval has been working very, very hard and has taken all direction, and I can feel a real difference already in that campus, as can Dr. Palmer. So, the activities that they're required to do is have campus leadership teams with a district rep, they have to do a needs assessment, data analysis, and I just thought this piece would be interesting to you, these are the essential actions for focus that they want us to be looking at and reflect on, uh, and I just think it's best practice to be looking at these items, and they really detail out the actions that help enforce these, so developing your instructional leaders, recruiting high-qualified educators, having a well-aligned vision, mission, goals, values, uh, that show high expectations, curriculum and assessment that is aligned to the TEACs with a year-long scope and sequence, objective-driven daily lesson plans with formative assessments, and, uh, data-driven instruction. And they had to go through a series of questions and ratings with their team, and they had to pick two or three of these items that they were going to focus on this year for their school improvement, and that's what you have in your TIPS, uh, plans. They also have to embed the TIPS work into their campus improvement plans, so you just voted to, uh, accept the campus improvement plans, these campuses had to have those TIPS pieces in their campus improvement plans. So, the role of this campus leadership team, it's the principal along with campus and district leaders, they quarterly monitor the student performance using data along the way, they use the protocol that we just talked about to make campus-wide decisions on interventions and support system, services. Like I said, they do that four times a year, and they are, to adjust and turn into the state, uh, as they go, they need to adjust the plan based on what they see happening. So, these are the submission dates, so we're, as soon as we have this board meeting, we'll be turning in their first round, and, um, then each quarter thereafter. Do you have any questions?
I think that, uh, one thing that we can say is, we know from past history that it's possible to come from the bottom to the top.
Absolutely.
You know, seeing that happen, um, I have no doubt that that's going to happen again, and I would, if there was one thing that I would want them to take away from, um, at least my feeling about the situation is, that it is, it is not only possible, it's probable and it's expected.
Absolutely. It's, it's been proven over and over again, these schools that have been in trouble have worked their way out, and one thing that we're doing, like I said, to sort of hopefully keep schools off of the list is, we're sharing some of this work with them so that they can work along the way this year and make sure that they're going in the right direction.
I'm sure that Gardens could probably, uh, allay some of their fears, and, you know, that school, it, it went from, you know, just the pets to absolutely wonderful things happening at that school.
It's a great place for kids.
And I'm very, um, just pleased as punch.
Well, Pasadena High School did the same thing.
Yes. Pasadena High School, yes.
So, if your track record is any good, this will all happen.
Yep.
With the people we have and the interest they have and the professionals, it'll happen.
We have a lot of people who work hard on this, including Linda Wright. Are you still here there? Yes, Linda is actually my go-to gal because she does so much of this paperwork and keeps it off the principals, keeps us in line, keeps us turning things in on time, and it is a monumental task, and I'm very appreciative of all that she does for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We look forward to good reports next time. Thank you. I got this down as a consideration of possible approval.
I, I move that we approve the, um, targeted, targeted improvement plans for the 2019, uh, 2020 school year for the schools listed. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of application for a TEA low attendance waiver for bond intermediate.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of application for a TEA low attendance waiver for Jackson Intermediate.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of application for a TEA low attendance waiver for Queens Intermediate.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of application for a TEA low attendance waiver for Jackson Intermediate.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of application for a TEA low attendance waiver for Queens Intermediate.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
I don't ever want to see these again.
I don't either.
Amen.
Yeah, right. No joke. Say we live on the Gulf Coast. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Consideration of possible approval of continuing membership in the Region Four RDSPD, including this updated administrative guidelines, shared service agreement and budget for the 2019, 2020 school.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mr. Hernandez. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of application for a TEA low attendance waiver for bond intermediate.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of application for a TEA low attendance waiver for Pasadena High School.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mrs. Sullivan. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of application for a TEA low attendance waiver for Jackson Intermediate.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of application for a TEA low attendance waiver for Queens Intermediate.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
I don't ever want to see these again.
I don't either.
Amen.
Yeah, right. No joke. Say we live on the Gulf Coast. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Consideration of possible approval of continuing membership in the Region Four RDSPD, including this updated administrative guidelines, shared service agreement and budget for the 2019, 2020 school.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mr. Hernandez. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of memorandum of understanding, MOU, with San Francisco Community College District, SC, SJCCD regarding a dual credit provider relationship.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Student achievement, what we have is some achievements that are, we're very proud of, results from PSAT and National American Scholarship Qualifying Test Recognition Program, UIL Region Marching, Marching 19 Contest, Pasadena Livestock Show in Ruby Heart Contest, and November 2019 chess tournament results, so, that stuff going out there in different areas for our kids, and they're doing a fantastic job. Policy, section, Mr. Roberts. Consideration of possible adoption.
It's me.
It is you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's not.
It's you.
I thought so.
Yeah, she doesn't say that. Consideration of possible adoption, local district update 2019-03.
So moved.
Effective CD local, QC, Q, CQA local. Second. Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mr. Hernandez. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of budget amendments.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Mayor, Mayor Sel Kehana, same with Mrs. Morgan. Any comments or questions? All opposed, all in favor, excuse me.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Vote. Motion carries. Consideration of possible adoption of the board resolution providing for a one-time employment, employee retention payment.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mr. Hernandez. Any comments or questions?
This is where I got excited earlier and thanked you for it in an earlier section, so I was just excited twice now, so thank you for this for our boys.
I was wondering.
I don't know.
I just thought you were excited about everything.
Wish it could be 250,000 each.
That'd be awesome.
Motion passes, but thank y'all for what you do.
Amen.
We're very proud of y'all. Operation section, consideration of possible approval of final change order number 002 for the Dr. Kirk Lewis, the Technical High School Edition project.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of final change order number 01 for the Masons Elementary School Replacement Project.
So moved.
Same again. Same with Mrs. Morgan, same with Mr. Roberts. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA, number 04 for the new Red Bluff Elementary School Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mr. Hernandez. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval for rejection of all bids submitted for CSP number 220P-013LP, New Maze Operations Warehouse Facility Project.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
Board members, remember, this was designed for the L.F. Smith property, and so I think when they went out for bid, there was some discussion about changes they could make to help with costs as far as parking and drives and detention, um, so just to let you know, we are very confident about going back out for bid on this project.
Will there have to be a reduction in space, Kevin?
The only area, actually, the square footage is really designed right now for, for the program, so we can't really cut back except for the warehouse, since we're going three high on the shelving for pallets, we may pick up a little space there, so we're looking at that, but as, as far as all other areas, we wouldn't be able to reduce the square footage. Mostly reserved to the site, concrete work, can eliminate some drives, cut back on our detention, so we've got some really good ideas that are, uh, we got from one of the contractors, had over three and a half million dollars' worth of savings on some other, other ideas that we're going to incorporate into it, so.
That's great. Wasn't the bid like $5 million over what we had anticipated?
It was. The lowest bid over the project budget.
So, if you went three high, then you would be reducing the footprint of the building?
For the warehouse space, yes.
For the warehouse.
We're not as spread out with the pallets. We're going vertical instead of horizontal.
And that is practical?
Yes. We'll have to get equipment to be able to stack it that high, but.
You know, I'd just like for us to make sure that practical is a good word when we're going to reduce it, you know, I don't know what all we missed, but, and we may not have missed anything, we may just overdesigned it, but, and we've had the conversation about that, but, you know, if we build it, I, I hope we're not cutting corners that don't need to be cut in the long run.
Not only that, but safety.
Just to get to a dollar figure.
Safety-wise, just that we don't end up regretting it later. I mean, did it really make sense? Is it taking us more time?
Mm-hmm.
You know, all of that.
Yeah, Jerry's been real involved, and we've visited several warehouses spaces that have that design, so we've, we've investigated pretty thoroughly. He's pretty confident with, with going with that, that design, so, but yeah, we will not cut back on the program space.
Thank you, Kevin. Any more questions?
It's not the space, I'm just talking about the usability of the facility.
Exactly.
You know, we're, we're going to need it for years, not just one time to make sure that somehow we had a bond issue, we, we had an estimate of a bond that really came out to be accurate, and I'm not throwing rocks there, it's a, it's a tough process.
Using a forklift isn't always fun.
Or say.
No.
It's pretty, pretty high.
We trust you.
Okay.
Just saying.
We'll look at it very closely.
Not that we're experts, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of budget and design service agreement for the administration building replacement project and funding by the fund balance.
So moved, second.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan, same with Mrs. Kehana. Any comments or questions?
Hooray. Board members, you know, this was originally designed as a mall, and we purchased this, um, in 1986, but it was built in the late 60s with about a two-to-four inch slab, depending on what part of the building you're talking about. I think every architect has always told us you need a minimum of an eight-inch slab, so I can't tell you how many times, because it's not just been during my time, but previous superintendents as well, and I'll use the probably inappropriate term, but we have jacked this building up, and it just keeps falling into the ground, um, so we're in need of right now some severe foundation repair. I have some people sitting out here whose desk have literally ripped from the walls, Linda being one of them. Uh, that's not fun to come into work to because, uh, the settling of the building, we need to replace a vapor barrier, we need a new roof, um, my office leaks a lot, so I can't imagine what other part of the buildings look like. Um, HVAC system totally needs to be replaced, electrical upgrades, and I'm just naming a few, completely new flooring, as you can see, it's coming up, and unsafe, uh, lighting upgrades, I haven't even talked about air quality in the building, and I won't go into details in that, the bathrooms desperately need to be torn out and brought up to co. So, about $6 million just to put a Band-Aid on this building. So, in 2014, y'all looked at a new administration building, and because of budget constraints and wanting to keep our focus on putting the money at the campuses where that's always our priority, um, we talked about pulling back and not doing that, and so that's what we decided to do, and we've put that on the shelf for some time, but I think we are wasting tax dollar money by trying to repair this building over and over and over again. So, it's time to have this conversation and, uh, look to replace it. Uh, we have the donated land for where we can do that, we have a previous design, uh, one of our architects has done for us, and so we're ready to move forward, our fund balance is healthy and can sustain that, so we're asking for you to approve this tonight.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Can, I looked at the comparison quotes on the per foot basis, 203 versus 275. Can you build this building for, or not this building, but a much better building for 203 a foot? Versus the, see, I think that's a pretty conservative price. And by the way, the architects, I appreciate you putting 6.3 on the design side. But 203 seems like a pretty conservative rate today. So what is, what is construction costing today for a building like that?
I don't know if Charles wants to come up or if Kevin. Somebody, come on down.
What I don't want to do.
The price is right.
If the price is 205 or 210 or 215, tell me today. Yeah. But don't tell me, don't give me the AJO excuse, well, you know what the deal is, everybody's busy, labor costs more money, yada, yada, yada. I've heard that for years and years and years. So if the true price is 205 or 215, tell me today. I don't have a problem with building a new building, but I want good numbers, at least good numbers to the point that I feel comfortable with what I see. And I see the 275 on the nutritional building.
Smaller building.
Yeah. But is 203 truly a good number? Because I'll call you back out on it on bid day.
I think it is a good number. I think that.
Is that a realistic number?
I think it's a realistic number.
Okay.
It is always extremely difficult to project, you know, what building it could cost.
Yeah, I understand that. And I don't, and I appreciate you telling me that. But if you think, if you believe that it could be higher, 210, 215, tell me today. Don't tell me the story about, well, labor costs more, materials, they're fighting China, yada, yada, yada. You know what I mean? That's all I'm saying. I don't have problems spending the money, don't have a problem doing it. I just want to make sure the price, we're getting a good price. And we're not budgeting below what the cost really is.
Of course, we're always in favor of having adequate contingency. But I want to point out, if you compare the administration building to, for instance, a new campus, what you don't have is laboratory space, you don't have gymnasiums and a lot of site work like football fields and those kinds of things that you would for a school. So that, you know, the cost per square foot, with the exception of your boardroom space and a couple of training areas, is, you don't have the more expensive spaces that you do. You can also use some materials that don't necessarily have to be as rugged. I don't think your staff gets as unruly as you might have on your, on your campus or some. So there are some differences.
And I'm okay with that. I don't think that, you surprised me. I didn't know we put the football fields and those things in the square foot price on the buildings. But, but I just want, I just want a good price this time. I want, I just want a good price, that's all I'm saying.
We've talked with contractors who do these types of buildings, you know, two- and three-story office buildings and gotten some general pricing from them, what they see the prices have been, what they project them to be. And we've added a little bit to that. So as of now, we're comfortable with it.
Okay, all right.
Well, this, this building, when it was, when we first renovated it, everybody in the community called it the Taj Mahal. We expect the same thing in the new one.
Yeah. I think there's some opposing for all, so I don't know how to answer that question, but.
No answer required.
I mean, our goal is to design a building that is economical, but yet is a building that serves its need, enables you to attract the best people that you can, your staff, and is also a place that the entire community can be proud of as well. So, but at the same time, we are going to be cognizant of what it costs.
I know you will.
And that's what we believe we've done with the schools as well, so. But I think it's, I think it's overdue. I think that, I think the district deserves it.
We want a safe and healthy building for our employees, but like you said, recruiting is big. I mean, this is where you come.
Absolutely.
To decide if you want to be part of the Pasadena ISD family. And not to say HR isn't beautiful, Mrs. Lopez, but they do walk down the hall perhaps to go to the restroom and then they turn the corner and stumble across the broken tiles to get to, maybe get a Coke or a snack while they're waiting for training or things like that. And it, at times, it's embarrassing when you have the building issues that we have. And we want to attract the very best for our children.
Yes, we do.
And we want to, of course, have a building for years to come that we don't have to keep putting money into to keep it effective and efficient for our staff.
Well, this building is a lot like Golden Acres was. We threw money after money after money at Golden Acres and finally just had to build a new building.
That's exactly.
Same thing here.
Yeah.
You wouldn't spend $6 million on this place. It just wouldn't be practical.
No.
It's long, long overdue. This was just built for retail space and quick sales, so.
It's not built for what we're using it for.
No, not at all.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at here?
Our tentative schedule is to be in at about two years from now or a little, maybe even a little less than two years from now.
Fantastic. In.
In 2021.
Design? Do what now? In the building.
In the building. Occupancy in October, November of 2021 is the current.
Fantastic.
Wonderful.
That'd be good.
Let's get moving.
Thank you, Charles. Any other questions?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval. Well, I'll crack on that one. Consideration of possible approval of construction contract for the Sam Rayburn High School tennis courts and site improvement project included in the 2014 bond program.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
Boy, they're expensive.
And as you know, we've gotten May Smith down, the old building. So you know the area that we're talking about and y'all have seen the design. We do have the contractor here, Michael, and I'm going to say this wrong maybe, Doucette. How'd I do?
I got it right.
Oh, good, I got it right. He's here tonight with us. So we're excited about a great project for Sam Rayburn High School. It's long overdue. We'll move those tennis courts out of the way so you can see that beautiful early college high school and brand-new gymnasium. And it'll make a whole new look for Sam Rayburn High School.
That's awesome.
How many courts?
Oh, boy. How many?
I was surprised at the 1.82.
Courts, six. Thank you, sir. Six.
And what have we got now, four? Is that right? Or more? There's six there?
But it's going to change where the, and y'all, correct me if I'm wrong, baseball field and all of those areas are going to be changed as well.
Parking.
Parking. Hello, Craig. So when will that begin?
After you approve it tonight, it would begin tomorrow.
Probably have a pre-construction meeting very soon.
Good, all right. Maybe not tonight, maybe not tomorrow, but very soon.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Construction update, any comments or questions? Miscellaneous section, consideration of possible adoption of board resolution casting ballot for Ben Pappy to be elected as a school district representative on Harris County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey. Any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
In the past, when people have run for this position, they've provided the board with a list of their qualifications.